All right, I believe we're now live and we're streaming on YouTube. Good morning, everyone. My name's Deanna Diemore, the Director of Health for the City of Norwalk. It is eight oh four and we call the August thirtieth, twenty twenty-two Board of Health Meeting to Order. Present, we have Terry Quell, who's a Board of Health member, Janet Karpia, Board of Health member, and Norman Weinberger, Board of Health member. And we have several health department staff members on, including Anyella Fignan, Megan Fogno, Brian Weeks, Teresa Argandesi, and Bill Mooney. Do they miss anybody? Okay. All right. Good morning, everyone, again. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the March twenty-two, twenty-two meeting minutes. We have several meeting minutes on here for approval because we didn't have a quorum. So today we have a quorum, so I'm going to ask that we review, revise, and approve the minutes. So first one is the approval of March twenty-second, twenty-two, two, twenty-twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Janet seconds. Thank you. Any discussion? Any comments, revisions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Abstain? Nay, sorry, who else did aye? Passes? Thank you. The second item is approval of the April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two meeting minutes. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Terry and Norman seconds. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, three ayes. Passes. And the last item is the approval, the last minutes, meeting minutes item is the approval of the May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two meeting minutes. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Terry Quell, and then I believe, do I have a second? Second. Janet seconds. Any discussion?
Nope.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you all. That is the meeting minutes. The next item is the Director's Report. So over the summer, we've had some great staffing updates. We were able to, because of Mayor Relink, support your support, Lamont Dano's support, Chief of Staff support, BET, et cetera, we're able to add an epidemiology position to the city operating budget. And so Brian Weeks' new title is now Program Director of Epidemiology and Informatics. And so really excited about this, this update and this change. Previously, he had been funded from from cities, from some city funds on a temporary basis, and then transitioned to COVID-19 grant funding to support his efforts. And and we all know that Brian comes to us with a lot of skills and a very diverse background, you know, beyond COVID, and he has a lot of great skills, and he's added a lot to the department. So really excited about his new role. He's thinking about the future and how important data is, and also the informatics piece as well to the, you know, the future of public health. So congrats, Brian. Really excited to have him on our team. And we also have Megan, who is transitioning to work in the Community Health Division, really closely with Teresa on our, with the community health workers on COVID-19 vaccination and outreach. And you all may remember, in the middle of all of this, you know, when we knew the vaccine was going to be coming and we had to coordinate this, I just said, you know, I need Megan, I need Megan to really pull these pieces together in terms of like helping, you know, bring all the different parts of the department together to plan our clinics together. And she really did a fantastic, fabulous job with that. From, you know, helping, and she learned the system so well. She used to help people across the state on learning how to use the system. She would help people make appointments for, you know, like really from like from all different angles of this, from the coordinating to just helping, you know, individuals make appointments. So I'm really excited to have Megan in this new role, supporting this, these efforts. And she's done a great job and works really well with Teresa. And Megan will be still helping us, you know, she's our accreditation expert, and she knows a lot about public health and about our department. So still helping guide us and supporting our efforts across the department, but with a primary focus on COVID-19 vaccination and community health. So congrats, Megan, and thank you for everything. We've also, Sherri Van Ness is a contact tracer who's done also a fabulous job, amazing job with everything. And she's transitioned to a supervisor of contact tracing and case investigation role. And so I mentioned Brian is our Program Director of Epidemiology and Informatics. He's overseeing our new epidemiology division. So we now have an epidemiology division, and we've transitioned Sherri and Tahira, who's a contact tracer into that division. And so, you know, Sherri has done a really great job. She's really good with people. She's worked really closely with Norwalk Public Schools, and she's just a really great addition to our department as well. So really excited about all these updates and changes to staffing. We have our volunteer coordinator position is going to be vacant. Donna Schlegel is retiring. She's done, can't say how amazing her job she's done as well, and wish her well on her next phases of life, but she's staying on with us and is helping us find a new volunteer coordinator and is going to help train the new person once they're hired. So really thankful for everything that she has done for our department. And then we have a Health Operations Assistant that we're using grant funding to help support some financial work, keeping track and monitoring all the expenses related to COVID. So that person, that's a new position that we're going to be filling. And then we're also looking to fill our IAP Area Coordinator position. We're successful in working with the State Health Department to advocate to the CDC for additional funding for that role. It had been part-time, and it really is needed to be, you know, a full-time role. So we're able to secure additional funding. So we're working on transitioning that position to full-time, working really closely with Pam and Sarah and the IAP program. So I think that's all the staffing. The other thing I just wanted to point out is we are working with the Network for, Network for Public Health Law to establish ourselves as a HIPAA hybrid entity. So and Anyella's been doing a lot of research on this for us and Brian as well in terms of, you know, confidentiality and updating some of our policies related to that. So we're updating our whole confidentiality policies, and that'll be coming to the board in the months ahead. But we're looking at, you know, there are certain components of our department that fall under HIPAA because of, like, you know, electronic billing and that. But there are other things that fall under more, you know, state public health confidentiality laws. And so there's a way you can establish yourself as a hybrid entity so that, you know, all your regulations and all your policies for HIPAA-related work fall under HIPAA, and then your other, like, traditional public health practice work that falls under, you know, general confidentiality statutes and reportable diseases, and all that falls under another. So we're working, the, the Network for Public Health Law is a national organization. They're funded from the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation. They have public health lawyers, experts that are available to guide and support health departments through public health law work. And so we're working with them on that. So I'm excited about that. And thank you, Tanyella, for, for getting that going for us. And I think those are my major updates. Any questions on any of that? All right. So I'm going to transition to our COVID-19 and monkeypox updates. And so I'm going to pass it to you, Brian, first to, to give us an update on where we are. And then Teresa's gonna give additional updates.
All right, thank you, Deanna. Good morning, everybody. So I am going to be giving the very, very abridged version of this overview. So let's be very quick, but you're always welcome to kind of explore and experience this yourself. So what you're seeing showing up on the screen right now, we're not going to be doing the traditional PowerPoint as I've done for the situational awareness. We're going to use the, the city's COVID-19 data hub. So again, that's norwalkct.org forward slash COVID data. So a very simple link, and it's your one-stop shop for most things, obviously, COVID data-related analyses related for, you know, the city, regional perspective, state, along with obviously it links out to the, the main info center for COVID from the local level, just to get general guidance and updates and other things of that nature. So with, with that being said, you know, this is just the general loadout. The important thing here is this is the CDC community levels, which is going to be guiding a lot of the prevention measures as we especially move forward in terms of the fall and winter time and monitor that situation for the, the county, Fairfield County, as well as just the general region too, especially as people travel and do other things. So this is going to be incredibly important. As we're familiar with this, this is kind of taking account not only the case rate for the county, but also the healthcare system and the burden related to COVID. And so again, the higher it is, obviously, the higher or stronger the recommendations are relative to that. And especially in high or the orange level, that's where somebody, you know, it's recommended for most individuals just to be in indoor public settings, to be wearing masks and things of that nature. So right now, the city of Norwalk for the last five weeks has been holding steady at medium. We're on the very low end of medium, so we're on the cusp below. Current COVID data has been actually kind of lowering, so it's, it's been good to see that. Hopefully that will hold, but nonetheless, as was mentioned, tomorrow is when schools start. You know, everybody's kind of going back to normal routines. They're not traveling as much. They're all going to be kind of back in the city. So we should anticipate there should be some uptick. And we'll see how it plays out over the weeks, but something just to keep in the back of our minds. But again, the thing I always keep emphasizing again is the fall, winter time and being ready for that. And then this links out to the resources such as testing vaccine and the info center I mentioned. You know, general stats for the city. And so an individual is welcome to kind of review this. It shows the case rates, the percent positivity, and, you know, displays it or depicts it in various different ways. So there's a lot of finger, a lot of information at everybody's fingertips. And so this is kind of democratizing that data and helping everybody stay informed and up to date. And this update's on its own. You know, this is the hospitalizations for the state. So this is going to be a very important metric just to kind of monitor. Fortunately, it's dropped by about twenty-four, just with the recent daily updates. But again, you know, it does fluctuate. And as you can see here, it has been kind of holding a little bit steady or a little bit of an uptick here as of late for the summertime. So it's just something again to kind of keep in mind, especially when we look at severity of illness, right? Because that's the big thing that the CDC has shifted towards, especially with the changes in the isolation and quarantine guidance. Because I don't know if, if everybody's aware, there's been a couple of changes there, especially in terms of quarantine, and it's really looking at it from a more exposed state. If somebody's exposed to somebody that has COVID-19, and it's just wearing face masks and not so much hanging out for, or staying back for five days. So that was one of the biggest changes. But nonetheless, just keeping an eye on this, because obviously we know where we've been, and now we can see where we're going to and have kind of full perspective of that. Keep in mind, previous summers for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, it was much lower than where we are right now. So Omicron subvariance have obviously been big game changers. This is about vaccination numbers, so we know kind of where we're at, and especially in terms of booster doses. And so we can kind of compare ourselves and get perspective and how we're performing relative to other cities and towns. And this is all interactive, so anybody can kind of add their own city or town or remove them, just to get a better understanding. This is like the state stats. And then this is also wastewater monitoring data for Fairfield County. So we could also kind of see where that's going. So it's always great to have these different data sources to see what they're suggesting. Having that alignment is usually much more helpful in terms of getting the full perspective, because each dataset has, and analyses has their own kind of caveats tied to them. Just some other data sources, the Twitter or social media pages for CDC, State Health Department, and the Norwalk Health Department. So a lot of great resources here. Definitely check it out, norwalkct.org forward slash COVID data. So as mentioned, in terms of the COVID situation, we're doing okay. And, you know, again, hospitalization is still a little bit high, and obviously what we're used to in terms of the summertime. But again, this is because it's the Omicron subvariance, especially BA5. We have other subvariance like BA 4.6 that might also slowly enter the picture and outcompete BA5, but we're, we're going to see that over time. But again, with schools starting, the odds are higher that we're going to see an uptick related to that, especially a lot of prevention measures in general have been relaxed. But other things have been emphasized, you know, that those layering of mitigation measures, especially like ventilation, things of that nature. And people just be mindful of their own situation, testing with that home test, and be mindful of that as well. So with that said, I'll switch over to monkeypox real quick. This is just the current status for the, the state of Connecticut. So this is happening once a week, and it's every Tuesday. And so currently at this number, it's eighty-four, but it's a little bit higher as of right now. Nonetheless, you can see how it's been over the few, the last few weeks in terms of the monkeypox case numbers. You can see it by county. Fairfield County has the largest number or volume at this point in time at thirty, followed by New Haven County at twenty-six, and then Hartford at eighteen. Predominantly, the demographics impacted are the twenty-two, forty-nine-year-old age groups, as you can see very clearly here. Gender is also very clear, you know, distinction here. It's majority male. And, you know, in terms of transmission patterns, it has been linked to, you know, and a lot of it, what we've seen in the state is just, you know, men who have sex with men, a lot of sexual activity in that regard, in terms of that transmission. But there's obviously other pathways in terms of the the lesions, when it's weeping fluid that has the ability, especially if they come in contact with fomites, you know, so, so intermediate, say like a blanket or a towel has a potential transmit. And there's also a respiratory component, not on the level of COVID, but there is potentially respiratory component, especially say somebody sleeping next to somebody for a very long, prolonged time period, and it's close contact in that regard. You know, there's, there's some risk there too. So everything has risks, just as we're familiar with with COVID. That's been the big message with that. And so then also for recent, and this, he just want to mention that non-Hispanic white is the largest proportion, but very closely followed by Hispanic and then non-Hispanic black at twenty-one. So that is the general update, just to keep this short, but happy to take any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Brian, so much. And thank you so much for showing everyone the new dashboard created that you at the mayor's office worked on. Brian's been spending many hours working on that and finding ways to make the data, you know, accessible at all times for the public and updated. And really, that's the direction we, we wanted to go in and really excited about this public-facing dashboard for COVID. It's really great thinking about how far we've come from, you know, giving numbers every day to where we are now. So thank you, Brian. You've added so much to our department and to the city. So I'm going to pass it to Teresa now to give her updates related to COVID and monkeypox.
Good morning, everybody. Can you hear me? Okay. All right, great. There, there's the yellow box around my, around my spread. So just real quick update on outreach for both COVID and monkeypox. So related to COVID, our community health workers have been very active in the community. They have standing outreach events at locations like Stepping Stones Museum for Children, Person-to-Person Pantry, the farmers markets in town. They've been attending to provide people with information, resources to go to for more information if they're looking for in-depth detail. They've also done a lot of outreach to preschools and daycare providers. They recently helped local preschool connect with the Griffin vans and hold a clinic at their location that was able to vaccinate seventeen people, which is these days, a very high number. So we're really happy about being able to connect people with resources. And that included about half children and half adults. So we had whole families coming in to get their vaccines. So that's great. Our key messages right now are around making sure folks are up to date on their vaccination, taking other precautions, helping them understand, as Brian mentioned, the new updated CDC guidance. And then also advising them to prepare for the fall. So as Brian mentioned, you know, the fall season, as people go back indoors, we and, and go back to school and that sort of thing, we expect to see an increase. So we're just advising folks to not wait till they feel sick to make sure they have some tests on hand to take precautions, like masking indoors, if that's what they, you know, are, feel comfortable with. And then also just stay home when they feel sick and test and, and stay in contact with their healthcare provider. So just kind of advising people as we, as we typically do for flu season, making sure all our, like, over-the-counter medicines are are ready and, you know, prepping for that, that season, you know, looking at COVID that way and making sure, take advantage of all the free testing opportunities that are out there to get some at-home tests to, to kind of prepare for the fall season. Similarly, on the community side, we are talking to the vaccine providers in the area to, in preparation for the potential authorization of the new bivalent booster that we're expecting to get news about at the end of this week. We expect to see high demand for that when it first becomes authorized. And just like most of the new vaccine phases, there may be a little bit of a rush at the very beginning of availability. And so we're working with other community providers to make sure that the vaccine is available as much as possible and coordinating all of that activity as we look to this new, this new booster being available. So that's the update on COVID related to monkeypox. We have been working really closely with the state. They have multiple meetings per week to keep us up to date on on the news, both from a case count perspective and, and, and some of the data that Brian has reviewed, but also about vaccine eligibility, about other precautionary measures, about communication and messaging. And so we're working with the state closely on that to make sure all the information is translated, so to speak, properly from, from state guidance down to the local level. And we've also developed a really great relationship with the Stanford Health Department and and our counterparts in Stanford, seeing that there is, you know, a regional, possibly a regional approach where Norwalk residents might be going to Stanford for care and vice versa. You know, meeting with them regularly, we have a weekly standing meeting with the Stanford Health Department and some of the key, key providers, both clinically and community-based organizations that, that have clients who are either at risk or concerned about monkeypox. And so we're working closely with them to make sure that access is as smooth as possible to vaccination, to testing, to other healthcare and, and precautions. And that also vaccine eligibility is clearly understood, and that access to vaccine for eligible individuals is as smooth as possible. So we're also speaking with them a lot about communication, about what are some of the key messages, and then also ways to, ways to get that message out effectively. And so working really closely with them, we're a few weeks into that and have developed some really good relationships. Our local vaccine provider here in Norwalk is Circle Care Center, and they've been a great partner in this work and participate in those meetings to provide us with some great feedback so that we can all work together to, to get the word out in an effective way. And that's my update. Thanks, Deanna.
Thank you, Teresa. Again, a lot of great work, a lot happening over the summer. So thank you to Teresa and to the team. Does anybody have any questions for Teresa or Brian for COVID or monkeypox? Great. Thank you so much. The next item on the agenda is a strategic planning update. So I don't know. A lot of updates related to strategic planning as well. So you recall the last meeting, we talked about strategic planning and our process. And so we've done a lot since then to move the update of the strategic plan moving forward. So we had our draft strategy for strategic planning. One of the, one of the components was conducting an environmental scan. And so based on one of our Board of Health meetings where Ms. Larchella was suggesting, you know, the, the public wants to, you know, be more involved and get more opportunity for input in the strategic plan, we designed a customer or stakeholder survey. And so we worked closely with, you know, committee partners and others to get it out. So we looked at, you know, models of other health departments, what kind of questions are asking, what's, what would be included within a SWOT analysis to then synthesize to add to guiding, like, what our, what our focus would be for the strategic plan. So we put together stakeholder survey, we put it in Spanish and Haitian Creole as well. We, we sent it out to our community partners, we sent it out on social media, the city put it on their social media, we worked with the library to get the word out. And so we got seventy-five responses to that stakeholder survey. It's still open too. So for those who are listening, if they have another opportunity to fill it out and want to give feedback, please let us know. We can send it out to make sure you have the link. But so we incorporated that within to our environmental scan. So what we did is Anyella and I and Megan, we put together the environmental scan. We looked at community health data, right? So what's the latest from, from our community health assessment and past community health assessments? From the community well-being survey, what are the trends, what, what are the leading causes of death, what are chronic diseases? We looked at some of the social determinants like food access. We looked at obesity, housing, maternal and child health, a lot of different health topics. We also looked, you know, at access to care. And then we looked at, you know, what's the financial picture of the health department, what our revenues look like, what our expenditures look like, what are we seeing in terms of the investment in the health department? How is our staffing changing? What are the grants look like? And then we did a whole look into like all the other sources of data that tells us about the health department. So reaccreditation, right? We had all the notes from the site visit, all the suggestions for where we did really well, and then what were our opportunities for improvement? We had the City of Norwalk's efficiency study, again, talked about like, you know, what we did well and where we needed to improve. We also synthesized that stakeholder survey and mentioned and looked at, you know, the strengths, the opportunities for the opportunities, areas for improvement, the threats, and just to share some of that, those findings. You know, the, the people that had filled out the survey talked about the staff really being the greatest strength and how caring people are and friendly and accessible and available, but also knowledgeable and professional. Talked about the COVID response, talked about services provided to the community, the volunteers and ERT were really highlighted as a strength. And then when it came to areas for improvement, it was a lot of, well, we want more community outreach and events. We want to publicize your work and, and services more, more mental health resources, more health screenings and clinics in the community. So it was very, it's interesting that hearing from the community, very community-focused, right? Being out in the community and doing more of that great work. And we also looked at a lot of the, the national frameworks and reports that have been coming out. If you've been following the news, there's a lot that's been coming out about the future of public health. So we looked at all those reports and synthesized them, like, what are the standards and where is this, the field moving in the future? The, we participated in the Public Health Win Survey, as we've mentioned in the past board meeting. So that was like a staff survey of like, what are their needs for workforce development, but also kind of an internal customer satisfaction survey, like, how is it working at the health department? And it's like, what are staff needs? We looked at like climate change and some of the really big national, international public health threats. So we did a lot of like deep diving and looking into the data and incorporating that to determine, you know, where should we focus our strategic plan. So we enlisted the help of a consultant to help facilitate a session. Earlier on in the summer, we had over twenty staff members. We had two Board of Health members, thank you, Terry and Ken, for participating. We did a SWOT analysis. We incorporated technology. We did Jamboard, which Anyella and Megan had found for us in terms of finding ways to keep everyone really engaged. And so I'm rambling a lot, but as a result of this, we looked at like our vision mission value statements. We set up, we have a work group now that's looking at revitalizing and revising our vision statement, because excellence with efficiency. We looked at, you know, what is a true definition of a vision statement? And it's really supposed to be a compelling and inspiring image of a desired and possible future. And we felt that excellence with efficiency, while it's something we always are striving for, it, it was more like operational, not necessarily like what are we trying to achieve, you know, for the community. So we have a, a subgroup right now that's working on suggested changes to the, the vision and the value statements as well. We are doing some wordsmithing related to the value statements, and we'll bring that to a future board meeting for your feedback. That's been happening. And then we also have some tentative strategic priorities. So we did a prioritization matrix where we looked at what were the themes coming from our discussions and all the data and coming up with priorities. And we applied criteria to that to determine. And so we have several priorities right now, and we're going to be fleshing out work plans and strategies to address it. So it's a work in progress. But our hope is that we'll have a plan ready for January one, twenty twenty-three. So we'll keep you all posted. We have some preliminary meetings set up with staff and those that are going to be working on coming up, you know, with the draft work plans. But you know, in, in terms of like where we're focused, a lot of it was on some internal policies and procedures, a lot related to workforce development. Mental health came out, climate change. We're fine, we're going to be finding ways to weave that into all the different priorities, whether that's, you know, workforce development or looking at, you know, comprehensive, look at our, all our programs and services and figuring out, you know, where to move forward. Anyella and Megan, anything to add related to strategic planning?
Not really. I just wanted to say thank you so much to everybody who has been part of, a part of the strategic planning efforts. You've really made it so easy for us to kind of move this process along, especially for me, who's brand new to the process. It's been a pleasure working with everybody.
I would just say a big shout out to Deanna for leading our department and assisting, you know, with our consultant, but really helping me and Anyella help the rest of the team. In the process, Deanna has been an amazing leader, like you guys already know. But she really is, you know, spearheading all the strategic planning, so that it's, it's been amazing. So thank you to her.
Thanks, Megan. You guys make it easy. We've got a great team. So just to, sorry to recap, we're looking at technology, because that really came across very strong recommendation, recommendation, both in you know, the city's efficiency study, all our past strategic plans, what we've been hearing from you as a board and the staff, so improvements related to technology. Promotion of our work, workforce development, taking a look at our, you know, current clinical services and other services. And then also like other some internal organizational development and then climate change as well. So, all right. Our next item on the agenda is performance management. So I'm going to pass this on to Aniela for her to give an update. But again, her and Megan have really been guiding this work, working with supervisors and staff from across the department to really update our performance management system. So take it away, Aniela.
Good morning, everybody. So thank you so much for taking a look at the six performance management dashboards that we sent to you earlier in the week, around Friday, rather. And so obviously, right now, we have six divisions, our administration division, community health, emergency preparedness, environmental health, epidemiology, and preventable diseases. And so Megan and I worked with supervisors and staff from each of the different divisions to to really sort of enhance their performance management dashboards. And in some cases, to completely create their performance management dashboards. So what I'd like to do is to walk you through one of our dashboards and kind of highlight the major changes that we've made. Sort of in terms of formatting and the way that we'd like to, you know, gather information from our, our dashboard. So please feel free to stop me at any point if you have any questions. Otherwise, I am just going to dive right in. Let me share my screen. So not to toot our own horn, but in the administrative division, we've done a lot of growth the last year. And that's obviously largely due to Deanna's kind of pioneering and lobbying the city and for more positions and more full-time funding. And so this is the dashboard that we came up with for administration. And so I'm just going to go through it a little bit piece by piece. So the first kind of item here that drives the division is the goal. Our goal is to provide effective leadership and management support to the department in order to maximize performance and achieve department goals. That really hasn't changed all that much. However, a lot of our objectives have changed. Especially in the divisions that have seen sort of a revamp of their services and their programs. So here for the administrative division, we decided to come up with objectives that would really reflect all of the metrics and measures that we are looking at for this fiscal year. And so you can see our objectives right here. And what we did was align each of these objectives with a domain. So as you can see here, we have domains for each dashboard. Domain one through domain six for this one. And that really just kind of breaks up the dashboard so that we know what the different categories are, you know, are we looking at finance and grants? Are we looking at more of a strategy and performance? You know, work. And we have different measures for each of these, for each of these areas. And so, again, you guys have seen all the measures that we sent to you. We came up with specific metrics, goals that we'd like to reach by each quarter. And each of those are kind of formulated based on, you know, based on when we want to get things done, how much we want to get done within a certain time of the year, et cetera, et cetera. So again, we just kind of have this, we have a performance narrative where we are able to write comments for each quarter. So at the end of quarter one, supervisors will put together or ultimately put in their metrics for the quarter. And then they'll put in a couple of sentences or a bit of a narrative, kind of explaining some of the numbers, you know, if something we didn't measure up somewhere, I know what happened, what got us that place. If we did really, really well, you know, what went really well? We want to capture this information so that in future years, we're able to, you know, use this iterative feedback loop to improve our services and our programs and our workforce in general. So that's kind of the gist of the first page. The second page is our measure definitions and details. And so this is something that we decided to create this year. And one of the reasons is because when we were working with Fab, something that we noticed is that they wanted specific definitions for a lot of their, when they were asking questions or probing questions, they wanted specific definitions or to be able to understand what exactly or where we're measuring in certain places. And so what we did was put together this definitions and details tab where each measure is listed, a responsible party is listed. So that's really just the person who's ultimately responsible for collecting the data on that measure each quarter. The person who is responsible for the dashboard, which is the division supervisor, is ultimately responsible for all of the data collection. But this way that they can kind of lean on some of their staff members and other colleagues throughout the process so that they don't have to you know, gather all this data themselves every quarter. In the next column, you can see the definition. So what we tried to do was really define what exactly is happening in, in the measure. But what is point of this? And then in the detail section, we have sort of the why and the how. So any additional background, you know, why did we choose this measure? Why did we think it was important? Why did we choose the metrics behind it? What is driving those metrics? You know, did we set a high goal because we are hoping to reach, you know, reach higher numbers in a certain program this year? We set a lower goal because we've noticed in, in previous years that something that our goal that we set for ourselves was unattainable. And so really, this is just sort of explaining to ourselves and to future staff members who may be reading an old dashboard and you know, not have had the benefit of being a part of the process, giving them the benefit of understanding where our head was at. So I hope that that gave you a little bit of insight into the, the dashboard and last tab is where we will save all of our old performance narratives. So each quarter will be here at the end of the year. So I hope that that sort of gave you a little bit of an overview. I'm sorry if that was a little bit rushed, you know, we're trying to pack things in today, but I am just going to give you guys a couple moments to let me know if you have any questions. All right. Sounds like not too many questions.
Thank you, Aniela. That was a great overview. Thank you for walking through the dashboard. And I'm really excited about again, right, like evolving and where we are now versus where we started with our performance management system. I feel like it's really grown, it's really improved. And so thank you for all of your work and Megan, your work and all the supervisors working with their staff. It's really great that, you know, there was involvement from all levels of staff and developing and updating these dashboards. Any questions or comments?
Just a comment from everything, you can see how hard everybody has been working and it's really good to see all the attention that's happening in the health department. So good luck and good job, everyone.
Thank you, Terry.
I just want to say it's Megan, big shout out to Aniela. So again, this is Aniela's first time working on performance management. And me and her were working together, but she really took a great leadership role. And it's always nice to have a new, fresh set of eyes looking at our processes. And so her, her coming up with all those different changes, those, you know, were all driven by a fresh set of eyes. And so I just want to say thank you, Tanyella, so much for pushing this process. She's been an amazing help and resource to the whole department. So thank you to her.
And thank you, Megan, for your guidance. I couldn't have done it without you.
You guys are great. I feel like I've said that like 10 times today, but it's true. All right. Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is body care technical standards. And so I'm going to pass it on to Bill to explain. But just to give a quick recap, you may recall that, you know, there is a we have regulations and technical standards that have been set by the Board of Health that defines like how we implement the body care and body art ordinance. And so we, there are some changes we want to make to the technical standards that Bill is going to outline and review with you. So take it away, Bill.
Okay, good morning, everybody. So as a result of some changes to state health department regarding licensing, we wanted to have those changes reflected in, in the technical standards. So under section three, for practitioner and technician, you're now required to have a nail technician's license. We wanted to put that in there and reflect exactly what that was encompassing. So that's in there. We also added the eyelash technician license and what's required of that. The tattoo license. This is always, the microblading has always fallen under that, but I wanted to kind of lay it out where it was teased out a little bit, so it was kind of a separate, just to make sure that anyone doing that type of procedure understands that the tattoo license is required and has separate requirements to be able to get that particular license. One of the other changes is under the esthetician license, they are allowed to submit for a combination license where they could also incorporate the eyelash and the nail technician into one license. So that's allowed just under the esthetician's license. So those are the, the four changes under that section. Under section four, concerning the tattoo stuff, it used to be that there was requirement to be under the supervision of a physician. And that is no longer required. So we just incorporated what the state is requiring under the the tattoo artist, that section there, it says be eighteen years of age, possess the license and so on. And the other items that are completed regarding bloodborne pathogens and having the red cross and those sort of things. That's required by the state now. So we simply wanted to get that into our technical standards to reflect the same thing. Under the state, they're also requiring a couple of small things, but that I didn't want to put them in because they're just forms requiring, you know, there are 2,000 hours of work and training under a tattoo. Practitioner and, and also whether five years before that the law was changed, that they had 2,000 hours of work. But that's something that's submitted to the licensing and notarized. We didn't want to incorporate that in there. But we do want to make sure that this other, these other items were put in and reflected those changes. So that's, that was it. There's minor changes, but they're important. So we just wanted to let you, make you aware of them. Any questions? Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Bill.
So yeah, we wanted to review those changes with you all to, and then we can, we can send them all to you on writing so you can see them.
We have to approve those or are those automatic since it's coming from the state?
Yeah, I mean, so, yeah, we're all just making, I think it would be good, maybe if we vote on it next month, just to vote on them, but I think because they're coming from the state or we can vote on them now if we want as well, but there are our technical standards. So I think it would be a good idea if we could vote on it locally as well.
Yeah, probably a good idea.
Okay. Would you prefer us sending them to you so you can review them prior to next month and we can vote on it next month? Does that work?
Yeah, that's fine. Then anybody who wasn't here today could take a look at them as well.
Okay, great.
Could you highlight those changes for us when you send it out?
Sure, thank you.
Aniela's nodding her head.
Right, thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Next item is our policies and procedures. So again, we couldn't formally adopt any of them or adopt the changes because we didn't have a quorum of previous meetings, but we did make several like changes based on input from a prior board of health meeting. So our after action report. We removed email addresses that were specific to DPH employees, they were removed, which was a great suggestion, keeping it more general. Our foodborne disease outbreak investigation, we didn't make any changes to that. The lighthouse awards, we added a class two under the awards definition. I think Terry, you had pointed that out, so we made that change. Reportable Z is infectious reference manual, there were no changes there. And then septic. We, we, I think it was brought up to remove the fee chart from the policy, so we wouldn't need reapproval, but we did list the fees in appendix C and we did set a policy that appendices don't need to be approved by the board of health every time a little change is made to like something like that. So that's sort of our way of solving that problem if we need to, you know, make slight changes. So are there any comments or any thoughts related to any of these policies? Can I have a motion to approve the edits and changes made and updates to the after action report policy, the foodborne disease outbreak investigation policy, the lighthouse awards of policy, the reportable infectious disease reference manual policy, and the septic permitting policy?
So moved.
Terry moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
And it seconds. Any comments, concerns, thoughts? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Dr. Weber, do you, do you support? All right. Okay, thank you. All right. So motion carries. Thank you, everyone. And again, thanks to the staff for, for all their work and thank you, Aniela, for listing out all those revisions, making it easy to follow all the changes. All right. And then we wanted to spotlight a new application process that we've put in place for interns and volunteers. So I want to pass it on to Aniela to, to review that with you all.
Hi again. So this should be pretty short and sweet. We have already at the Norwalk Health Department already had interns and volunteers for years and years. But the process does seem to kind of keep changing in terms of how we want to recruit and interview and kind of meet these people. And so something that we've noticed in prior iterations of our volunteer intern process is that a lot of times people are not sure really what kind of information they need to submit. They let us know that they want to be an intern, but we're not sure whether it's, you know, formal, informal, what their needs are. And so what we did, and I'm just going to share my screen with you really quickly, is to set up a a portal and an application process where interns are able to answer some of the critical questions that we would like to have answers to before we go into an interview with them, just so that we are able to figure out which supervisors might want to speak with them and what kind of opportunities we might have with them. And so here you can see we're on the Norwalk Health Department's page. You can find this page specifically by hovering over About Us and going to Volunteer. So when you go there, it brings you to this page, and it kind of lists out a couple of the different ways that you can get involved. So we have our emergency response team, which you guys are well, you know, enshrined in what they do. And that has a very specific different application process, which goes through Donna at this point. And interns and student volunteers at this point are now going to have one application, but it will clarify what their needs are, whether it is informal, formal, and whether they need to complete anything, you know, have any specific number of hours, et cetera. So when people do reach out for information, I direct them to this page and I ask them to please complete this form. And when they click on that, it brings them to a survey where we collect some of their basic demographic information, like their first and last name, we collect their resume. We want to get a sense of whether they need formal experience or informal experience, if they just kind of want to get a little bit of volunteer experience under their belt. We ask them what their specific requirements are, whether they need to complete a project at the department as part of their capstone or their practicum. You know, what days and times of the week they'd be available, start and end dates. And then a couple of questions to try to gauge where they might fit best. So, you know, what made them interested in the Norwalk Health Department? And what divisions of the department are they most interested in? And lastly, is there any specific program, service, or topic that they're interested in? And so this has really helped, even in the couple of interviews that we've had, and a couple of applications that we've had in the last month or so. It has made it very, very easy for us to kind of figure out which supervisors need to see the resume and just kind of make this a streamlined process. So once an application comes through, there is a backend to this where we are able to see all of their answers. You can download it in an Excel, or you can just easily see it on the platform, just sort of their basic answers. And then you can download their resume. So typically what I've been doing is taking that information, importing it into an email, sending it to the appropriate supervisors. And then we decide, you know, whether or not we want to speak with the candidate. Most of the time, we're going to speak with the candidate just to make sure, you know, that they have an opportunity to sell it out there. And yeah, we take the interview and then kind of go from there. So that's really what we're doing at this point and hoping that by having this more streamlined process, we'll be able to have a little bit more of a robust program.
Thank you so much, Aniela. Are there any questions or comments?
Looks good.
Thanks, Terry. Right, really excited about this new process. And I agree, it's, it's big improvement and, and streams a lot, streamlines a lot. All right. Our last item on the agenda is public participation. I don't see anybody attending right now. Um, so I don't believe we have anybody from the public. So um, it's eight fifty-four, so we can adjourn. Um, so I hope everyone has a great day. Thank you for being on and uh, thanks for all the great updates today, everybody.
Have a very day.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye.
Good job.
Bye.